Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Thank you for coming out. Welcome to the meeting, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. First item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order at six thirty. Next on the agenda is to approve.
Oops. I'd like to make a motion to add on.
Oh, okay.
Going to executive session if we have time.
Okay. That, that, thank you. That would be to discuss a lawsuit between Cumberland Farms and the town, the town of Deep River, that we're just figuring out how to go back about it. We just need to talk about how we're gonna respond to that.
So that'll be down like six point five?
We'll put that last, and if it's okay with you guys, we'll table it if this meeting runs along.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Dwayne. So that's a motion?
Uh, second. I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dwayne. Next item up is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item up on the agenda is audience of citizens. Do you have a couple of citizens here? Do you have anything they'd like to speak to?
Um, I do.
Fire away.
If I could, Alan Parry, three twenty-seven Main Street, Deep River. Been following the discussions regarding the ARPA funds for quite some time. Unfortunately, well, maybe fortunately, I haven't been able to attend all of them because I was in Mexico for a period of time. COVID prevented me as well from being here, but I think there's been a lot of discussion. And I want to make some, maybe some recommendations about process potential, as well as comment on a couple of things that I've stated at previous meetings. First of all, it's, we're pretty fortunate to have that funding available, but as you guys know, one point three million dollars can disappear pretty quick, especially when you begin to chop that up into smaller pieces that may not be focused in the same collective goals. The other thing to keep in mind, too, is that I know a lot of people talking about this as free money. It certainly isn't free money because every, every resident in Deep Rivers, you know, suffered some, some losses. And not everyone is necessarily going to benefit from the, from the ARPA fund. We need to keep that in mind in terms of what's the most beneficial for the collective from these funds for the town of Deep River and not necessarily, you know, a specific project. Because I know there are very specific items that are listed. I'm not sure which ones are being put forward and why, but I am aware that there's not enough money to fund all of these. So some of them are going to either be stripped down or, or left off the table. Let me refer to my notes real quick. There's definitely some, some specific goals that are identified in ARPA, and it's, it's really identified to, to recover and protect from future similar pandemics. So I think it's important that we establish some criteria when we begin to fund these, these specific proposals. There's certainly proposal out there for the, you know, the health and welfare of individuals, and I think that these are probably the first priority. It may not be the most expensive to fund, but their absolutely immediate needs ahead of purchase of equipment or capital projects, individuals. And I know that there was a proposal put forward for healthcare and counseling. Those are the ones that people don't necessarily see. You might see illness, but there are people, and they're gonna have lingering effects in terms of mental health and counseling. So again, I think that those are, they're not expensive items, but they're clearly priorities over some of the other capital expenditures. Emergency response also is a, you know, a key objective of the funds, but I think, Jim, you're the one who identified that a lot of these asks will be funded under our normal budgeting process. And so the allocation of ARPA funds towards these items may not be the best use of, of that available resource. So between the two priorities, kind of the, the protection, which is the protection against future pandemics and the, and the protection of our citizens who have suffered a loss, the other side of it is the economic recovery. And I think a lot of the efforts in regard to the economic recovery really need to be focused on the town of Deep River and what's the most sustainable economic recovery. And I would suggest that what's missing from some of these proposals is the, is the development of our infrastructure that's going to support all of the businesses. We've got a precedent in this town that, between Smitty doing the streetscape improvements, it was beneficial to all of commerce in Deep River. Really made it a walkable town and a place where people are gonna come to do business. So that's the type of thing I think requires more vision, not an individual to put in a request to, to do a specific project, but I think it's important that the town, the leadership of Deep River find some way to fund some of that infrastructure and continue the development of primarily Main, uh, Main Street and our, our business district. In addition to comments that you made, Jim, relative to, you know, these items that will be funded or can be funded, have the means to be funded under our normal budget process, I think, Aggie, you made a very astute comment about not funding them entirely, but really funding the shortfall. Some of these things can be achieved, and you made the comment regarding the, the ambulance is that it may not be the town's responsibility to purchase an ambulance at all, but it is, I think, the town's responsibility to enable them to do it, to assist in the purchase. I think you suggested fifty percent. A lot of these capital projects, purchase of equipment, whether sort of fire department, ambulance, et cetera, might be seen as being done as a assistance. We provide for the shortfall and allow part of it to come out of the normal budgeting process, and we allow some of it to come out of initiatives. If you, you know, again, this is the ability to raise money for specific equipment or items that might be on their, their wish list. Again, we also have to distinguish what's on a wish list versus what's on a needs list. I think that the ARPA funds are specific about a need and not opportunity based. Dwayne, you also made a, I think, an extremely important point, that if we make the allocation for a purchase or specifically, I think it was in regard to hiring a staff member, it does, this does put a burden on the town's budget two or three or four years down the line. I know the, in the guidelines, it's very explicit that if you're gonna fund staff, it's to bring back staff that couldn't be afforded as a result of COVID. So it's to bring them back or to fund staff to a proportionate level specific to meeting needs that were driven by COVID. So expansion of programs with staff does exactly what you kind of warned against, is that we're gonna have to perpetuate that if we get the benefit, but it's also not something that's, that's really supported under ARPA. So in regard to process, is, one thing I think would be very beneficial, which would be establishing the priorities of the town, how these, these ARPA funds are distributed through more of a consensus process. I know you've met with certain, you know, entities within town to solicit proposals for needs, but I think that a process such as planning and zoning is going through with the, with the development of the COPD and engaging EDC and all of the other stakeholders in town, be it Park and Rec, be it the school board, that the allocation of the funds are reached by a consensus of meeting all of the needs of all of the stakeholders. It seems, and again, again, part of my concern is, the agenda is possible action on these ARPA funds, which means to me that they'll be going to a recommendation prior to involvement of, you know, the various boards and commissions in town to make sure that it's in line with the missions of the commissions and boards and the town in general. Mentioned before, a firm believer that the funds should be looking at the collective good and directed more toward infrastructure, streetscape as opposed to individual projects. I know it was discussed, I think it was at the two meetings prior of, of kind of enabling funds for storefronts and, and, you know, building facade. I think that that's perfect. I think that's right in line with, with the town has done previously in streetscape development, but it also begins to allow the entirety of Main Street to benefit from these, from these improvements. But there's other infrastructure needs, the data, parking, traffic calming, that might be considered as a longer term, longer benefit to the economic recovery. So in conjunction with the, the, kind of the process, the criteria for evaluation proposals, I think you've put forward some, but they haven't necessarily been identified as, you know, this is, this is highly determined, the go, no-go on specific proposals. You know, I think one would be, is it broadly beneficial to the town of Deep River, not just to, to an individual entity? Does it burden future resources? I think that's something that, Dwayne, you know, you were, you're curious to point out that these decisions aren't a matter of just, we have some money available, we can have some, it means that we're gonna have to come up with more money later on in order to reap the benefit. I think we need to make determination, is this a want or a need? I mean, that's more than the ARPA guidelines. There's a lot of things we want to do, but it's clear that these funds are available for, for needs, for economic recovery and also for, you know, protection against future And I guess another thing that we, we need to keep in mind, too, is do any of these proposals or are some of the funds going to underserved portions of our population? Reason I mention that is that those are the individuals who are not coming to the table to ask for these resources, and I think it's incumbent upon the leadership in Deep River to identify some of those things. The health services are a big portion of that. So before all the funds are allocated, I think we gotta make sure that we've, we've covered, covered those bases. Last point I wanted to make was on a specific proposal. This is on a park and rec proposal for the, for the, I think I put forward a proposal for, correct me if I'm wrong, seventy-five thousand dollars for two music festivals. I had made a recommendation to ask them to revisit, because it's already come before you, and there's, and I think there's some, definitely some positive response to that. I tend to think they should revisit, but I tend to think that they should, we should be allocating more to that. But not to specific music festivals, but for enabling projects, so that is not just the music festivals, that we focus on that end of Main Street and we look at the properties of the Town Green, of Debit's Field, and, and the Historical Society, as this is a place that we can host cultural events that are of the scale and magnitude and presence of what they're doing in Saybrook and East Haddon and Old Lime associated with the other arts and cultural institutions. That's gonna bring commerce and business into Deep River, that if we do the enabling projects that support the existing functions, the muster, the horseshoes, the, all the other events that people are asking to do, I think they're asking for markets, it's the, the car shows. But one thing I've noticed over the past few years, especially during COVID, is more and more demand for outdoor venues for music. And it's happening in the private sector, and it really should be happening in this, in the center of town and be a method, a strategy to, to really fuel the economic recovery. We need to get bodies back down on Main Street. It's gonna take, it's gonna be slow. Businesses that have suffered the most, you know, restaurants, long, you know, they took a huge hit. But if we were to focus on a strategy, a planning strategy to reinforce kind of the, an arts and culture context, that's gonna, that's going to, I think, in the long term, really reinforce the economic recovery and stability and growth of the business sector. So I just wanted to plant those seeds. And, you know, it's, it's really just a matter of, I was a little bit alerted by the fact that if we take action and we expend significant portion of the available resources, we won't have that significant lump available to focus and do something that has significant impact from the standpoint of the town, center, and infrastructure. So I will give you my written comments because often I own it or indulge. The editing version might have been more.
Now, that was a great chat, buddy. Very good at what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the comments. I think, you know, without getting into an hour-long discussion, which you and I can do.
Sure.
Most of what you've said is, is all things that we've already, we are, we are talking about and are thinking about in all of our, all of this process. So I appreciate very much your comments. Anyone else? Okay.
I can go in.
That's okay.
Repeat all that?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is audience of citizens. We've got appointments on, oh, sorry.
We did.
We did, audience of citizens.
I was appointed.
Started with an A, that's all we got. Appointments. We have three different commission, commissions that are, that we have folks that are volunteered for. They're all in front of you, all of, all of whom are, are good folks. We'll go right down the list. Board of Fire Commissioner Sean Scott, I think you guys both know him. Businessman in town, spent in town a long time. He's attended a meeting or two, has agreed to, to accept the position, and I'd like to, I would recommend that we appoint him.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sean Scott for the Board of Fire Commissioners, term to expire twelve one, two thousand and twenty-eight.
I second that.
All those in favor? Next up is Parks and Recreation. We have two folks who have stepped forward. Kayla Howard, you may, may know her, first, the wife of James Howard, here in town, been, you know, a family, a Deep River family for a long time. And David Richards is new to town, but he's been involved in the PTO for a little bit, volunteered for a couple of their projects, met with some Parks and Rec people and agreed to, to try and help out with Parks and Rec.
It's good to me.
So both of those folks.
I'd make a motion, might, I make a motion for Parks and Recreation Commission for Kayla Howard, term to expire twelve one, two thousand and twenty-five, and David Richard, term to expire twelve one, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Okay. And next is the Sustainable Committee, Sustainable Deep River Committee. Nancy O'Neil McGee has volunteered, and she's been endorsed by the chair and by the committee to, to come up on there.
I'll make a motion to have Nancy O'Neil McGee for the Deep River Sustainable CT Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And thanks to the folks stepping up, but it's great. Next, we have tax refunds from the Tax Collector. We have three refunds this month in the total thirteen hundred and four dollars, ninety-seven cents.
Make a, make a motion, approve the tax refunds in the total, a total amount of thirteen oh four ninety-seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have, next up on the agenda, a review of possible action regarding ARPA funds. Before we get into the discussion, or to, to start the discussion, we have gotten three new requests, if you will. One does not have documentation in front of you, but we got a request from the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission to put fifteen thousand dollars towards study of parking on Main Street. I spoke with Tony and I spoke with John up at the zoning enforcement office. I'd like to speak with them a little bit more about expanding that. We know we have a parking issue on Main Street, but I also know that the land on Main Street does not lend itself to more parking. We're gonna need to go off of Main Street. So I'd like to talk with them about maybe putting more funds into that and doing a more comprehensive study, economic and, and planning of Main Street. So we know that we have a request from Planning and Zoning for at least fifteen thousand. I'm gonna work with Tony and with John to try to come up with something a little bit more comprehensive. If, if they determined not to, then we'll, we'll stick with that. We, we definitely know we have a parking situation on Main Street, so. Next up, if you remember during the last, last meeting, someone asked about the Estuary Transit District, why they hadn't, there was nothing in there. And the answer to that is simple, they, because they are quasi-government, they have their own ARPA funds that they're getting from the state of Carolina. But what it did is it triggered in my mind that we had not heard from the Estuary, Estuary District, or the Est- Estuary, down in Old Saybrook, that, that serves the elderly populations of all of the Estuary area. We reached out and asked, and they, they intended to send it, it just got lost somewhere. So they sent, they resent it for a request for seventy-five hundred dollars. There's, you know, quite a bit of explanation here, but that seventy-five hundred dollars to, Dwayne, to your point, is to, to help support an additional social worker at the Estuary Council. My question to them was exactly the same that we've talked about, how are you going to go forward once, once this money runs out? And they talk about it here, the requested funds will fund the expanded hours of the position for the next two years. At the end of those two years, the Estuary will have had sufficient time to increase the budget in order to accommodate this program without putting any other programs at risk. Started that process by moving the thrift shop, thrift shop, and made other strides in other fundraising efforts. This seventy-five hundred dollars covers the next two years for the Estuary.
The only question that I would have is how many other towns are part of the Estuary? And is everyone paying seventy-five hundred? Or have they asked everyone for seventy-five?
Most, the funding for the Estuary Council is usually driven, and the annual funding that we, that we contribute towards the Estuary is, is driven by the population of the town and the population that utilizes it. So I'm confident that other towns did not, were not even requested for seventy-five hundred depending upon their usage.
Okay. I'm just curious to see what type of usage.
Essex contributed two thousand. Chester, I don't find right handy.
I have it, but I don't have it tonight.
Yeah. I could find it. Yeah, it was right here. I don't know what Chester, I don't know what Chester.
No, I'm just, just curious to see what, what other towns.
Yeah.
Contributed.
I, I don't know. I haven't looked, other than Chester and Essex, of what we have. So that's something to think about. They, they do support quite a bit of our, of Deep River's.
I, I, I support that, it's just, if I'm gonna give seventy-five hundred and someone's gonna give a thousand and utilization's about the same.
No, that's a good question.
What their criteria is.
We can reach out if you wanna come.
No, I'm just curious.
No, we can formulate those questions.
Yeah.
And we can reach out and ask, we don't have to act tonight. I do have some of these that I would like to move forward, some of the, you know, the social services stuff, so we can talk about that as it comes up. The next is another request that came from the Deep River Housing Authority. This request came as a result of a meeting that we had with the director of the Housing Authority and our state representative and our state senator, Norm Needleman, and Christine Palm. That meeting was because the program, some of the programs at the Housing Authority that are run through the Department of Social Services have deteriorated considerably as a result of COVID, some of which is as a result of COVID. DSS, they're not really in the office anymore, they're kind of operating remotely. They're not getting back to, to current comments in a timely manner. In the memo that got sent out to you, what's happening most, or what we're trying to address with this, is simple household needs, not, not taking, medically taking care of the people, but you know, just kind of homemaker kind of things, meal preparation, grocery shopping, light housekeeping, laundry, maybe even making the beds. Joanna's making the beds for these folks because the DSS and, and the program is failing in getting these folks the assistance that they need just for that kind of household stuff. What, what we're taught, what we talked about was it turned into a two-way highway. The DSS is pretty entrenched, and it's going to take some time to get any kind of their programming repaired. To take care of this immediately, there are numerous residents over there who need to have this stuff done, and they can't get workers there. Some, they can't get people back because of COVID is what they're saying, but, you know, the staffing is not there, and some is just, just a breakdown in the system. So what, what we spoke, I met with the, the Housing Authority's Board the other day, and we talked about establishing a pilot program that we can, if we can fund it for a couple of years, until we can either show the DSS that this is a program that works and have the state funded, because right now the state is actually funding workers that are not coming. It's broken down that much, and they're billing residents for.
For stuff that they're not good at.
Staff that is not coming. So it's really broken down. So we're gonna let the senator and the representative work on that end of that, but in the immediate to help the residents of, of the, of the facility, who are residents of Deep River. With a part-time, part-time employee to work twenty hours a week, we think that we can get someone to come in and do some of these services for people that need them. Throughout, that evolves as people leave or as people get better, they, they might not need them. It worked out to about forty-seven thousand dollars, so they're requesting fifty thousand for the next two years to fund this pilot program. At the end of the two years, the program, if it continues, will be funded from other places, not, not, not from the town. If it continues. It may not need to continue.
If the SSS picks up the ball and figures into it now.
Gets back to where they were before. But that's, that's the request there. They're absolutely happy to come to, to meetings if we want to. It is something that I'd like to move through. I think it, I, I personally think it is something that. I think it, I, I personally think it is something that, that some of our residents really need and the Housing Authority really needs. We shouldn't have the Director, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority walking around making bets and doing things like that. So those are the three new requests that we have, or, or new things to, to talk about and consider. As we go through the list, I'm sure you guys spent some time this week looking at, thinking about these. I, I have some that I, I would like to talk about first. Maybe prioritize would be the better way to say it. That, that lend themselves towards social services, towards things that are maybe a little bit more time-sensitive. So that if, if we all agree, then we can move them to the Board of Finance tonight, that's the whole reason for this. And if they agree, then we can move them to town meeting and not have to wait much longer. I'd like, some of these, I think, are very time-sensitive. Starting off with, at the top of the list really, Tri-Town Youth Services. That forty-eight thousand one hundred dollars over the next years is, number one, we've talked about the, the needs that are over there. But number two, the money that Chester and Essex have agreed to contribute are contingent upon Deep Rivers agreeing to contribute as well. I don't know if you want to talk further about it now.
Is that, is that equal contribution or is that formulated also?
That's the same formula as, as that, if you want, we can go through and show, but that was, that was equally balanced the way that we've, the same way that we balance our budget. Yeah, Chester's is broken down over, yeah, it's broken down over three years. First year is four thousand fifty, the second for us, for Chester, for, basically, let me give you percentages. Chester's twenty-seven percent, Deep Rivers twenty-nine percent, Essex is forty-four percent of the contribution. Our contribution totals at forty, forty-eight thousand one hundred.
Now, quick, quick question, it's probably too early to answer, but have they submitted anything for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and increase there also?
Just the normal increase, you know, no, no new programs, other than, other than what this is funding. We're going to see, in a couple of years, we're going to see some substantial increases in their requests. Unless they are able to acquire another grant, they had a grant that, actually, I was on the board there when we were awarded a million dollar grant to run a bunch of programs. That has expired this year as the last year, so we're going to see some increase. Either, either they're gonna be awarded another similar grant or they're gonna, in order to maintain this purpose, but not, that hasn't happened this year. So that's, that's one that I would like to move forward tonight to, to the Board of Finance and, and to town, and to the town. Is there any discussion on that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I'm gonna, I think at the end of this conversation, we'll, we'll actually take a motion and a vote to move these to, to the Board of Finance tonight.
Do it all once or?
We can do that all at once, yeah, let's talk that through. The other part of that is I would like us to, to stay in session so that if we need to continue any discussion as a board, we can do so during that special meeting. The next item up is the Shoreline Soup Kitchen. That's a refrigerated truck purchased that they've asked ten thousand dollars from every town that they service in order to facilitate the purchase of a refrigerated truck, which will help them in their deliveries of perishable foods. Again, this, this ten thousand dollars is, all, all the other towns are, I don't know if all the other towns are contributing, I haven't looked at that. But I do know that all the other towns were requested for the ten thousand. I don't think it's contingent, I think they're gonna move forward with a truck anyway. But it is, I, I think these, these guys have helped us through COVID, we were, they were delivering food over to the Tri-Town Building for the three towns to come pick up out of, out of the backs of their trucks. They are, they help us with our Shoreline Soup, our Soup Kitchens that we have every, every week. And I think it's, I would recommend. Middlesex Health Center for Behavioral Health. This is a one-time payment and I would like to move it forward. I don't know much about Middlesex Health Center, other than what they wrote to us, but I do know that they service, they have served a num, a large number of people in Deep River, especially over the course of the.
Pandemic.
Of the course of the pandemic and, and subsequent. Something that we've been talking about with some of our, some of these requests is not only has the, the pandemic affect folks in, in the immediate, during, you know, loss of funds or loss of jobs or loss of whatever they might have lost, it has also contributed to a tremendous amount of need for social services, whether that's mental health or.
Community-wide.
Community health and like, and things like that. And these folks have, you know, eighty-five have serviced a thousand thirty-five sessions, eighty-five patients from Deep River over the past few years, so. I would, I would recommend this one.
That's fine with that.
Deep River Social Services, this is one that I would like to get approved so that we can bring it to the town, so we can start advertising, so we can get someone in to, to make our Social Services Office a forty-hour week coverage.
Because presently it's.
Right now, it's very part-time.
Right.
And I would like to bring someone in, I don't want to eliminate Rosie, but I want to supplement the office with someone who can come in for the hours that she is not there. This hundred and thirty is, I don't know the best way to say it, it is, it is an estimate is what we're going to need. And I think, and I estimate it high. If this covers, this will be for a thirty, thirty-two hour week. And it, and it would include, because it's full-time, it would include benefits that will package for the town.
Going to what Dwayne said and Alan said, at the end of the two years.
That's, that's where we will have to, and my, my sell on this from the very beginning has been, we will evaluate what the need is at the end of the two years. Maybe we don't need full-time, but I will guarantee you that we will need more than what we are covering right now. We are woefully short, I believe in that.
I believe that this present status is, is, yes.
I, you know, like I said, I, I support it, but again, I'm looking two years.
And I agree with you, I agree with you one hundred percent.
My biggest fear and I'm gonna keep beating a dead horse, but no, it's.
You're not beating a dead horse.
It's, it's a reality.
Right.
Again, and I don't want to come across a negative that I'm not supporting it, but I do, but down the road.
Yep. I don't disagree with you at all, it is a, it's a major concern. But.
The needs are now.
The need is, we do have the need now.
And we can determine whether that need is necessary then, and if it is, well then, we do what we need to do.
Would you be more comfortable if we kept it at less than full-time? So we're not open forty hours, let's say, let's say we made it a twenty-five hour week? So that takes, that saves us money.
That's gonna save you thirty thousand dollars off the, with benefits.
Yeah, that's right.
And that's just a wild guess.
No, that's, that's a little high, but it's, it's close.
Well, it depends if it's a married person, a foreign person, you know. And I just threw that out there, looking at what we pay for health checks.
It's a, it's a universal comment that I hear, is that they're not there enough.
No, that's, that's, that's correct.
And we need to address that somehow, whether it's full-time. I mean, if we've been serving the community with her less, way less than full-time for a while, maybe, maybe less than full-time, but more than what we got now.
I would like to, I would like to bring it up as much as we, we and the Board of Finance and the town agrees to. And, but I would like to, I would like that.
It's sort of a double-edged sword because you don't want to cut it too low.
Correct.
Then you aren't gonna, you aren't gonna attract any qualified.
Yep, no, I think the pay, you know, we're gonna have to check.
What I'm saying is not only the pay, but the benefit package type, it probably not attract someone a little bit more.
I don't think there's any question.
If it's full.
Then, then without the benefits. Let's stay that course.
All right, stay there?
Yeah.
That's fine, you know, we can make the adjustments as we go.
And again, I just, you know, it doesn't move on.
The next that I think is, is important is the, it's a request from the Board of Selectmen to add thirty-five thousand dollars to the Community Health Committee's bank account to assist with energy assistance. We're getting a lot of requests this year from folks and I'm sure this is going to continue and we're depleting their.
And we haven't had a bad winter.
No, we've been lucky.
We've been very lucky, but.
Joyce, Joyce can tell you and, and Rose can tell you and Carol can tell you that the number of people that are calling and asking to fill up their tanks is more than I've ever experienced in my time here. What I was thinking about, because that, you know, we, they actually, the CHC had to adjust the amount of money that they could have, could grant to someone because it used, they used to allow for three hundred dollars.
Doesn't go very far.
But folks won't come to put oil in a tank unless you get a hundred gallons. That three hundred dollars is nowhere near that.
Doesn't, doesn't cut it, right.
Considerably, I think thirty-five thousand would be a big help. The only thing I'm thinking about, and I'm thinking out loud, is I might like to ask you guys what you think about adding another fifteen to that to put towards their pan, the pantry. Because that's being depleted as well, all of the, all of the funds come, funding, keeping the pantry full as well as the energy assistance, all comes out of the same account. That account is being, is being, quite a bit of pressure is being put on that, on that account. So that's open for discussion really, as to whether we can, we add more or go up to thirty-five and see how things land. I personally, I think that, and, and this is kind of top of my head thinking today about this. After looking at the, you know, looking at the, the stock that's there, they need to refill that pantry this week. I don't think that would be a bad use of the funds.
I mean, community-wide, we have, it's, we'll know that we have a lot of, a lot of families that need assistance.
Yep.
In the free lunch programs and in the, in the backpack programs and all that kind of stuff, so there's, there is a definite need community-wide.
Well, it's a nice, it's a nice thing over there, I think folks appreciate the fact that it is not in the Town Hall. They don't have to come, you know, there's a little bit of privacy. So, and, and it works well, it's, it's worked well for a long time. So I would like to, if you guys would agree with the fifty thousand?
I have no problem with that.
Next up is, again, and this is, this is actually the bulk of the request, maybe not the bulk of the money, but the bulk of the request. I would, I would like to prioritize the the Board of Selectmen request for two hundred thousand dollars put aside for small business and nonprofit relief programs. That's something that if we can move forward, we can hire this fellow to come in and, and manage this for us. Again, this is something where the small businesses in town will have to fill out an application, apply for the grant. And they will be, if they satisfy the criteria, they will be awarded, I, I would, I would suggest this somewhere in the ten to fifteen thousand. We don't need to move this forward right now, we can get some more details on it if you, if you like. But I think this is something that the small businesses can, would, would benefit from.
I don't, I don't have a problem, I'm just, I'm concerned, again, I'm frivolous with my money.
Yeah.
You know, I, I know no one's not, not gonna do anything for nothing, but how much of a, is he gonna charge us to?
He is gonna charge us and that money will, what he charges us will come out of there.
Come off of that.
And he has done this for?
He's done it for Old Line, he's done it for Meriden.
Do we have a rough idea, you know, is it five thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand?
I will get that for you.
That's cutting into, into our.
Right.
Yep.
Residents, if anything, if it's gonna be ten thousand dollars, I would like to raise it to ten.
Yep, that's fine, I will, I will get that information.
So we're giving up a whole number to our, to our merchants.
Yep. Okay, good.
Just two cents.
And I like the fact that he is, or they, his group or, or whatever is doing it for other towns.
Oh yeah, no, he's got, he's got.
I wanna, I wanna do, yeah, that's a good thing.
It's more really whether he's available or not is the only reason I wanted to move it, one of the reasons I wanted to move it forward. The next, a Board of Selectmen Economic Development Commission requests for fifty thousand dollar grants to reimburse businesses or commercial properties for minor facade improvement costs associated with the rehabilitation of a commercial property. Again, that'll be something that will have to be managed by someone, maybe EDC. But there will have to be some criteria set aside for, you know, five, five seventy-five hundred dollar grant or any towards, to help with improvements towards the property, whether that's landscaping, the facade of the building, something like that.
I have no problem with that.
I'll like to wait, but it's, no, I just, I don't think that's a. It's not a tough, we have two other ones over here that you said that were important.
Yep.
We should talk about the, the Housing Authority and the Estuary, I mean, those are.
Yep, absolutely.
I think the Housing Authority is very important.
I do too.
Yep.
So again, I would rather act on something like, I mean, I'm trying to keep a little running total here.
Listen, I have no problem.
Originally, when, when we put this, we said we want to have three different buckets.
Yep, yep.
So trying to keep everything somewhat balanced, but.
Yes, I, I, this is not an emergency, it's something we can put off.
The three buckets and what Alan alluded to is needs and wants.
The only other, there are two more on the existing list that I'd like to move forward. The Deep River Ambulance Association, they have, we have a letter here that they provided that they are committing themselves to, if this goes through, that they will, they will put up the rest of the money and purchase an ambulance. So given the, given the timeframe that it takes to get a vehicle these days, I think.
The only thing I will say, you know, and I won't comment because of, I'm a Director in the ambulance, but the lead time, lead time for any new emergency equipment is out there.
Dude, we just saw the fire department, you know, that truck, the trucks are years out.
And that's somewhat of a little, again, two weeks ago, a month ago, I support that. But my question is, we ran into it on a fire truck. We say yes, we move forward and then a couple of months on the road, now all of a sudden they come back to us, hey, oh by the way, we need another forty thousand because the ambulance went up.
In this, in this instance, this is a, this is a separate entity. We were, we are pledging to them, fifty percent of the two seventy-five, so whatever that is, that's the fund.
I, I don't want someone to come back and say, hey, we need another forty thousand.
And they've committed to, to the rest of the cost, whatever that cost is.
That's the difference between a, the Ambulance Association versus part of, part of the town.
One thirty-seven, one thirty-eight.
One thirty-seven, five, I think.
One thirty-seven, five.
I'm guessing, I'm just.
Yep. No, that's not, that's a, that's a good guess because it's right in. The, the next one is the Deep River Historical Society. They've asked for fifty-three thousand dollars in infrastructure maintenance. The only reason that I'm asking that we push this one forward tonight is because that roof is actively leaking. And they need to get it, it needs to be repaired. If you, if you don't, if you don't think that that's something that we want, we want to prioritize. That's okay, but I do.
I'm gonna, I have to.
Yep.
I have to step back because I'm a trustee of the Deep River Historical Society.
Whatever you think is okay. I'm just, I'm just telling you where, where I'm at.
How, how soon are we going to go to a public meeting with this?
If the Board of Finance agrees to any or all of these, and they might not agree with all of these. If they agreed to this, I would, I would suggest that we put the town meeting as quickly as we can, which is probably about a three week to, in order to publicize the property, three weeks subsequent to tonight.
Do we have? So it give us one more meeting?
Oh yeah, yeah.
To discuss it.
Yep.
Do we have any other town meeting business that?
We've got a lot of things that we're going to need town meetings for.
Yeah. But this one probably should be standalone.
This one I believe should be because there probably will be a lot of discussion.
Again, I support it in the beginning. I just, I think we're making a lot of quick decisions tonight, but.
Okay.
Now, let's, we can move forward. Again, I just want to do my diligence.
I um, I don't think we're making any quick decisions. We've talked about these for a while now.
I know, I know.
I think it's important to, to make sure that folks understand that this is, none of these are quick decisions. We've talked about all of these. If you don't have, if you have any questions about them, I have no problem holding them back.
Again, I, I so hardly feel that we should protect the history of our town.
Yep, I do too. I think the Historical Society, um, they'll be here uh later on for the Board of Finance meeting. To talk a little bit about the lack, the loss of funds raised that they were able, you know, during COVID. So they, they, they've lost a good, good portion of money over the years. Those are the ones that are on the existing list. I would like very much to uh to at least bring uh the two, uh the uh, the Deep River Housing Authority and the Estuary. Into the uh.
Into the mix.
Mix as well, but again, let's have, let's talk about them individually. Dwayne, you've already expressed your, your uh. Your agreement that the Deep River Housing Authority position is, is important.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good with it. Again, it falls back on two years. Hopefully they can, the state can get their head out of the sand and um get this. You know, I would like to see our Senator and State Rep help us out here.
Yeah, me too. And that's why we had them in here. And that, and that's why, that's where this came from. Because it's, it became apparent that they were not going to be able to do anything quickly enough to get this resolved, so. It might, it might, this might be this pilot program, you know, not trying to sell it too hard, but this pilot program might be something that housing authorities throughout the, if it works, housing authorities throughout the state can.
What, what would happen if we appropriate the money to it and DSS gets their head out of the sand and starts participating? Then they won't need the money and we can allot that money for parts of other places.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How, how would we allow, how would we give this one a one-shot deal or as?
No, we would give them a chance. Their, their person would not be working for the town. They would be working for the Housing Authority.
So we give them the fifty thousand and like Jim's question, follow up to Jim, all of a sudden, nine months from now, the, the state?
Yes.
Are, are they going to reimburse us or is this going to be going forward?
The way that I would ask them to do this is where they would set up a, an account for this pilot program. You would have to do that because we've got to document all of this for the federal government. Anyway, so they would document, it would go into its own account, um and they would use it as needed um until it's not needed. And then if, if we get to a spot which, you know, knock on wood that we do get to a spot where we don't need it, that money can come back and we can reallocate it.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
How about the uh Estuary Council Proceeds? You want to hold off on that until we get, find out what other communities are contributing?
Well, I think the only question Dwayne had was, you know, how, how does seventy-five hundred for Deep River or is it a thousand for Chester?
Well, no, we know it's two thousand for Essex. I can, I'll tell you later on what it is for Chester.
I think that's the only question as to how they came up with that.
Is that two thousand dollars on, like we said before, utilization? If they have a smaller, they just said, hey, well, we're only going to give you two thousand. That's.
Yeah.
Because there's two different, there's, there's two different cases there.
I don't know the answer to that and we can do the same thing. We don't need to give them all of this if we don't want to. I'm going to table this one.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you okay?
I'm good.
You okay?
Yep.
All right, then.
You okay?
That's what you asked.
Yeah.
I think that's, that, those are the priorities that I see. Do you have anything else that you, that is on this list that you would like to prioritize for?
I think, personally, I think all the, you know, there's mental health, food, you know, community, you know, housing authority, I mean, it's. Well, not, we're going to table that one, but I mean, those are, those are needs. Those are needs now that we needed during the pandemic. We still need them now. Is it my mouth on an ambulance? But I think economic development, all that, I think that's all, those are all needs that were needed, needed now as a result of the pandemic or needed now. Continuing through from the pandemic, if I said it right.
Anything else? Okay, then let's um, let's make a motion.
Can I just verify for everybody? We're going to, we're going to make recommendations with some motions tonight. Those, it's not written in stone. It goes to the Board of Finance. I just want everybody, you know.
You read, you read my mind. I was going to go through this and I was going to explain the process.
Yeah, okay.
But that's fine. We'll do that now.
You know, we make recommendations to the Board. It's like we're spending, to Alan's point, this is taxpayer dollars, whether it came out of the town's budget or it came out of our federal income tax bills or whatever. That we as the Board of Selectmen will make recommendations to Board of Finance. The Board of Finance will go over everything.
Yep.
And they might agree or not agree, remove, add, modify, whatever. And at that point, they'll make recommendations to go before everybody in the town, so everybody in the town can vote on that and have their say, yea or nay in a, in a vote. So we're not, we're not saying the, the money is committed. It's just one of three steps before the money is committed.
That's right. That, that's a hundred percent right. And there's, there will be plenty of time for folks to talk about each individual. I would suggest that we're going to invite when it gets time for the town meeting and the Board of Finance might even want folks to come in and talk about their requests in front of them because they have not had that benefit yet. But uh, that, that is the process. And while we're talking about that process, I want to make sure that Alan understands, that, that everyone understands. That yes, the, the guidance from the um, from the federal government is such that. There is recommended expenditures, recommended criteria for expenditures. But they are not, for the small towns in, in states like Connecticut, as we've explained, these funds were um. Were allocated to the communities and if less than ten million dollars is what the towns were awarded, then they are allowed to use like that money for practically anything that they want. Doesn't mean that we're going to. In fact, we're doing a much better job with, if this list all goes through, we are doing a much better job than most towns in focusing on um.
Right.
Social services.
These things that we're talking about tonight, yeah. I agree with that.
There, you know, we can go down the list of folks that towns that just went out and bought two fire trucks, three fire trucks and all that kind of thing. We can't use it for payroll. We can't use it to pay off loans. We can't use it for, for other, to reduce our taxes. But we can use it for capital. We can use it for all of these things. Tonight, um, we're focusing on, really focusing on what, what we believe are time-sensitive social services um efforts with a couple of exceptions in them. But those are also time-sensitive. So if that's the case, I'd ask two things. Number one, let's get a motion. And a second and an approval to move these forward to the, to the Board of Finance. Um, and we probably are going to have to use two motions because Jim, only you can just abstain. So we can do one motion.
Yeah, for the, yeah, for the ambulance, I'll just abstain, yeah.
Actually, no, we'll have to do two motions. We'll, we'll uh keep the ambulance association and the Historical Society out of the first motion. So that Jim can participate and then the ambulance and the Historical Society, Jim will abstain.
Okay.
Then after that, we'll ask that we stay in session so that if we need to do any actions, we'll be able to during the Board of Finance.
So I will make a motion to move to the Board of Finance this evening. For Tri-Town New Services, amount of forty-eight thousand, one hundred. Charline Soup Kitchen, amount of ten thousand dollars, one-time payment. Middlesex Health Center for Behavioral Health, fifteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five, a one-time payment. Deep River Social Services, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over two years for full-time personnel including benefits. I'll make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to add fifty thousand dollars to the energy assistance. And, well, thirty-five thousand dollars and fifteen thousand dollars for the pantry.
Or CAC.
Right, so you want to break that up or?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
The Board of Selectmen, the two hundred thousand dollar small business and nonprofit relief program.
Did you want to move that? I thought we were going to hold that one back.
Yeah, we're going to hold that one back until, I want to see what it's going to cost and then I would like to add that.
That's the hold.
All right, take that back, sorry. And the Deep River Housing Authority for fifty thousand dollars um for a new pilot program down there.
Can you get a second?
Second. Sorry, I was writing.
Any further discussion on any of those? All those in favor?
Aye. I'd like to make another motion. Move to the Board of Finance this evening, Deep River Historical Society for fifty-three thousand dollars for infrastructure maintenance. And I'd like to move the Deep River Ambulance Association for fifty percent or a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for our share of an ambulance.
I'll second that. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes.
All right, um, we've, we've led into uh the Board of Finance time, so um. If that's okay with you guys, let's table the uh executive session regarding the lawsuit with Cumberland Farms uh until, maybe we can call a special meeting this week.
Okay.
And let's uh, we'll just stay in session.
Good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance, a joint special meeting with the Board of Finance, with the, with the Selectmen. Let's start with Joyce. Could you read the, the call of the meeting, just so we are certain? Our limited obligations. I'm not sure the obligations are limited, but they are limited in number.
Um, Board of Finance Special Meeting, Richard H. Smith Town Hall. It's a special meeting dated today, February fourteenth at seven thirty. It actually was called to order at seven thirty-six. On the agenda is called to order, review and possible action regarding the ARPA funds and adjournment.
Thank you. All right. We've done one. We called the meeting to order. Uh, second item is we will chat with the Selectmen. Their current status of recommendations. I don't know where they are on that. Uh, does anyone, since it is a Board of Finance meeting, anyone on the Board of Finance have thoughts? We have listened to the last set of recommendations. We have thought about them. We have received and continues to receive uh applications for the use of the ARPA funds. Does anyone on the Board of Finance wish to, thoughts to start off with or absent any thoughts?
That's a powerful phrase, an absent any thoughts, but Angus, you wish to give us a status of where you are and how we should proceed?
I do, um, and thank you. And I think once we get through, um, comments will be uh welcome. And, and I hope we have some good discussion about all of these. Um, the Board of Selectmen at the meeting that just, is actually still happening. Moved a, a number of, of these requests, not all of these requests forward to, we're going to bring them forward to you. Because we feel that these are, some of these are, all of these that we are moving to you are time-sensitive. We'd like to get them moving forward. And they, in our opinion, um, are not going to bring up a lot of discussion other than maybe we should be giving more and we can't, we can't do that afterwards. But um, these are time sense, we think are time-sensitive. We'd like to make these recommendations to you, discuss these tonight and hopefully. In our opinion anyway, hopefully you will make a decision uh to move these forwards at town meeting. If you don't, that's fine. This is, that's part of this process. We need to have some, as much conversation, make sure everyone's as comfortable as they can be. But um, we, in order to expedite some of these, we've made a motion to, to, to bring them to you. Now, do you all have the copy of your ARPA requests, the list, the list? Okay, there have been a couple of additions to those. One of which we'll talk about tonight because one of which, one of these has actually moved forward. We'd like to move it. If you look at your, uh, the memos that we just handed out, Deep River Housing Authority um is a new request. It is not on the list. And it came to, came as a result of a meeting that was called with the Executive Director of the Housing Authority had reached out to uh the federal government. And was pushed back to the state government to uh, to try and rectify the situation. To try and synopsize the, the, the request. You're welcome to read it, but the synopsis is this. The Department of Social Services is lacking, is falling short. Partly, some might say mostly, as a result of COVID and their, their um. Result is a gap in care up at this Housing Authority. Not care, that's not medical care that's not, that's missing. It is uh something as simple as household needs, meal preparation, grocery shopping, light housekeeping, laundry, things like that, that the folks that are up there. Are able to live on their own still, but need help with these type of things. DSS provides a service and pays for and bills these folks a minimal amount to provide these type of services. These agencies are having trouble staffing. They're having trouble um. Actually even communicating with DSS and, and, and members of uh, of different agencies. As a result, we find that the people from the Executive Director down, other employees are providing these services for the folks that are well beyond uh and, and. And taking time away from their actual jobs. This is a request for funds to provide two years of a pilot program with a part-time employee to provide these services only. Household, housekeeping services. The pilot program hopefully will, will be successful enough to convince DSS that it is another way that they can provide these services without having to go through an agency. If the authority can hire someone through funding from the DSS, then um, then they will be able to uh, to continue the program. If not, the, the hope is that DSS gets, gets reorganized and that the agencies that provide these services also get, are able to provide staffing. And it comes back to normal operation. But until that time, or until the end of the two years, um, we are. We are recommending that we move fifty thousand dollars into an account over at the, the Housing Authority in order to establish this pilot program. There is more um information here, explanation, probably a better explanation of, of the whys, but I can speak very clearly to the, to the, to the hows. And that is really to hire a part-time person, twenty hours, no more than twenty hours a week to come in and, and provide these services. Housekeeping services for numerous residents at the, at the, at the authority. So that's just another one that's on the list. It's something that the Board of Selectmen has moved forward to you. We can have further discussion about that, but I'm going to, and we will have further discussion about that, but we have a guest here from the Deep River Historical Society. The Board of Selectmen has moved. The Board of Selectmen has moved forward to you, the request from the Historical Society, to move fifty-three thousand dollars to request from the town, to move that to the town to vote on for repair of an actively leaking roof at the Historical Society. We have someone from the Historical Society here now to speak to that. I think I addressed it with you a couple of weeks ago, with some of the basic information. And if you want to just speak, now's your time.
I did it more as a formal, who we are in five minutes form. So you tell me if you want to just cut to the chase, or does anybody really? Many people go by the Historical Society and don't know what's going on. The bottom line, it's been there for eighty-five years. We've been trying to stay under the radar for eighty-five years. We've been trying to fund it ourselves for eighty-five years. We've been trying to be creative by having events, renovating the carriage house to have events. Outside, community events are now trying to be fundraisers, trying to increase membership, actively seeking grants. And at the end of the day, when you get an asteroid clause, COVID, that comes in, it created the perfect storm where we ended up in a, having some capital needs. Understand that the facility we inherited in nineteen forty-six was already a hundred years old. So from day one, that's been in a catch-up mode to try to keep it looking first-rate. And things haven't changed a whole lot since, where we don't have as many nonprofits, three funds, operating, capital, and reserves. We have operating, we have reserves. And when you have COVID, you're into your reserves. Reserves is what we're trying to get interest from the bank to sustain ourselves. So once we've got into this catch-up mode, two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, we're into the reserves, therefore less interest, therefore not a good scenario for the future. So if we can get back caught up, we had an expert come in ten years ago to identify the long-term capital needs of all the buildings, facility, everything. And we are still working off that document. So know that we're trying to be self-sufficient and responsible. And many of the activities, just so you know, we're trying, will help the town in the future if we can land some of these, like movie shoots, TV commercials, TV shows. And get, with Essex is getting and some of the others, we've already reached out to these entities. I've done it before at my Vanderbilt estate experience. And that's how you float the boats, is a lot of that money too. So we wouldn't be here if we didn't need it, and we don't want to be here in the future because I don't like asking for money. I'm not used to that. So know that that's why we're here, and we would appreciate anything that you can give us. And I have the numbers with us for the last five years. I'd be happy to share with you and have any intention, the narrative that expands a little further on just what I said. And the brochures that we're using, in case you haven't been in the facility, to see what we're doing. So I'd be happy to leave that all with you, Mr. Chairman, tell me whatever you'd like from us. And thank you for your time.
Could I ask one question?
Sure.
In a newsletter from Norm Needleman, he was listing all the grants for the local arts and cultural organizations. Deep River Historical Society didn't get it, where all the local other historical societies got it. Do you know why?
I'm not sure. The curatorial, the curator handles the grants. Right now, in fact, I'm on a lot of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, a lot of the nuts and bolts to keep the, and the forecasting of facilities. So I cannot answer that question. I'd be happy to get you an answer. I do know that they are actively trying to get any grant they can get their hands on as they come up. And it's a, as you know or don't know, it's an extremely tedious process. And we're, again, volunteer boards. Some of us retired, many not. And we fortunately have some first-rate people who are handling the grants, but they have a day job too. So I cannot answer that specific topic, but I can, I'd be happy to get you an answer.
Another question on the fifty-three thousand you're requesting, is that for roof repair or replacement?
Replacement. Both the Stone House and the Carriage House are staring down thirty years. And if, as you know from your own house, that's scary territory. Because you get twenty-five, you're lucky. And by the way, we're in New England, so that makes the life twenty-five-year not so real.
So it's asphalt versus slate? It's not a slate roof?
No, it's asphalt. And again, as, same scenario with your own homes. What looks great, yes, we think we have to replace shingles, but we may be into plywood, fascia and everything else once they get up there. We don't, we are hoping there's not cancer, but you never know. And so that's why we need to deal with this. We are holding all the historical artifacts of your town, and water doesn't mix.
I don't know you're going to get an answer right away. We're going to go through this whole list.
And I'm not looking for it, but I just, can I at least leave these with you?
Yes, please, please.
Once you get on to something else, then this is past history. And I'll stop with the propaganda here very quickly.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
This is good that you brought up this stuff. I didn't know.
Whoever did.
While we're, you're still going through. And it's beyond, all I can say, and I'll shut up here, it's beyond just museum exhibits and events. The outreach to the school, what Ronda, the curator, made a presentation to the high school last week. The elementary school is coming in for a tour. This is going on all the time. They need to know what's going on in their town, what happened. And if you haven't seen the World War II exhibit, if you leave anything other than melancholy, then we haven't done our job to see what Deep River sacrificed in a huge way. So it's all part of the learning experience.
Good job. With that, what we did is we introduced the new requests and then went down the list in order of, with our priorities. If that works for you, that's what. Thank you. Okay. So at the top of the list is the Triton Youth Services request for forty-eight thousand one hundred dollars over three years. This is a request for additional employees to provide additional services for the next three years. As we're going to discuss with all of the, there are, I think, three requests for personnel. The fear, the concern, not fear, but the concern is what happens at the end of this funding. Triton, I think they address it in their request. But the, ultimately, Triton Youth Services is is addressing a situation that we're going to address on our own. And this is a need that is right now and is a direct result of COVID. The importance of this, moving this forward, for me and for the Board of Selectmen, is that this forty-eight thousand dollars is a twenty-seven percent of the total funding that they're requesting from all three towns. Chester has been requested twenty-six percent, I think. I'll tell you in a second. Twenty-seven, sorry. Chester has been requested twenty-seven percent, Deep River is twenty-nine percent, and Essex is forty-four percent. That's the same formula that was used for how they get funded in their annual budget requests. But the importance of that is that Chester and Essex, their contributions are contingent upon Deep River's approval as well. If Deep River says no, then Chester and Essex will not get their money. So we've moved that forward to you. You've had the opportunity to read the requests. I don't know how you feel about it. If you have a need to speak with Triton, I'm sure Allison will come in. If you don't feel like you have that need, then we have moved it forward to you to discuss and to move it forward.
So Essex and Chester have already committed to it?
Yes, they've already committed to it, yeah.
Angus, was that one of your time-sensitive?
Yes, the only ones we're going to talk, we're going to talk tonight. And given the importance of this, I appreciate you guys coming out. But also given the night, I'd like to try to keep this move, keep this meeting moving. And we'll focus only on the time-sensitive ones. Our next meeting, we can put on a agenda and talk about other things. And I don't know if you want to continue and just have your conversation about these individually. If you do, I'll take a step back and let you talk about Triton. If you don't, if you want to go through the whole list and then talk about them.
How many towns are committed, equally committed for Triton or?
Not equally. Chester is twenty-seven percent. So I would suggest that Chester's commitment is a little bit less than us, because we're at twenty-nine percent. And Essex is forty-four percent, so their considerably, their contribution is considerably higher than ours.
So that is done. We are joined again?
Yeah.
Any thoughts? I certainly think the need is there. I'm going to, I think, quote Dwayne. I'm uncomfortable in that there could be an expectation that that will continue in the future. I'm not sure, and I don't have an answer. I'm just not sure that the town decides at Deep River commit the social services of the magnitude we are about to fund.
That's, I can, I can't, not speaking to Triton, but speaking to the requests you're going to get later on. We're going to reevaluate at the end of the two years. My hope is that we don't need the services that are needed right now, two years from now. This was, folks, I've spoken to a lot of folks that are in the social services field. I've read a tremendous amount about the, this experience was traumatic, not only for children, but for families, for people, but the children in particular. Lost two and a half years of social education, all different kinds of parts of their lives. And whether or not we can fund it two years from now is an important question. I'm not asking that we fund this, and they're not asking that we fund it beyond those two or three years. We may have a tough decision three years from now when they come and say, we still need this. But that's not the question now. It's an important part of the conversation.
But the need is now.
But the need is now.
And we're talking about sixteen thousand dollars a year. It's not a huge amount. And I think as long as we remember all this, and three years from now, we reevaluate it. But I would prefer to hear all of your requests before making a decision.
That's fine.
I think there's only so much money, and if we approve five things, it's only discovered there's something at the end.
We're not going to go anywhere, we're not going anywhere near the total amount. Yeah, that's fine, however you guys want to proceed.
That would be my opinion, is just to hear all of your requests first.
So we're going to listen to everything first and then discuss it afterwards?
I'll tell you what we did. We didn't, we spoke about each individual item after that. And we had a conversation about each item. Subsequent to that total conversation, we went individually and voted on individual, you know, we voted as a group. But we had a conversation about them all, and then individually, and then spoke about them as a group. So.
In that conversation, did you sequence them, or they all were simultaneous?
We did it in two different votes, because we had someone that had to abstain on a couple of items. But the conversations were individual. We went over the Triton Youth Services until we had no more questions. Then we went over Shoreline Soup Kitchen until we had no more questions. Then we brought it all in and went individually, do you want to move this one forward? Do you want to move this one forward? We didn't make a decision on moving it forward until after we had talked about them all, but we talked about them individually. So I think it's very close to what you're talking about. Let's talk about Triton until we're exhausted. Not make a decision whether we move it forward or not, just talk about it and then move, until, and ask all of the questions then. So we're focused on Triton. Then we move on to the next one and do the same thing. And then at the end, go back and say, do we want to move it forward or not?
I think what we did is, at the last meeting, I think Carol had mentioned something about time-sensitive ones. And we moved forward tonight the ones that were time-sensitive, that were important right now. I think there's eight or ten of them, nine of them, nine of them, seven, whatever. But that's what we did tonight. So we didn't go through the whole list and have everything, we just, the ones that are more important right now.
Why does it time-sensitive mean? What are the parameters of being time-sensitive?
The services that are needed for the children and the community. The next one, if you want to jump, the next one would be the Shoreline Soup Kitchen for the truck. That's a time-sensitive. They need it.
They want to purchase the truck. They need to get, they need to get this funding established.
And again, it's a fine line, what's important, what's not important. But these are time-sensitive. Then we'll see as we go down the list, come on.
Time-sensitive, for a simple answer to that, Carmella, is Triton Youth Services. They need the funds if they're going to do this. The other towns have committed to it. It's time for us to say yea or nay that we're going to or we're not. So that they can move forward with it or move forward without it. So I think that satisfies your need to talk about them all. And it doesn't, we're not voting on anything until we've talked about them all. So if that's okay. Do you have any other thoughts or concerns or anything on Triton Youth Services request?
I just do in terms of the staffing, which is what they're requesting. Just the observation that the ARPA funds are one-time given fund, we're not getting them again. And hiring people on after two years of work within a town, whatever they're doing, paying their benefits, et cetera. Once you give somebody something, it's really difficult to take that something away. You said, you know, at two years, at the end of two years, you're going to reevaluate it. Well, once it's there and it's in place, how do you tell people you're not, you don't have your job anymore? You're out, you're not working anymore. And that if we do keep it on, then that becomes a budget item, a taxpayer item, that everybody in town has to put money up to pay for.
Yep.
So let me give you the other side of that. I think that it's important, if we don't fund programs like this now, these kids are going to need more services in the school system. We're going to be paying more money in the school systems for special services for these kids if they don't get the treatment early and quickly. So I think it's imperative that we support something like this. Quite frankly, all the requests, to me, providing these services right now is critical. I'm seeing it, what's happening. I'm seeing the number of referrals going up to the hospital and to social services there. Kids are not getting seen in a timely fashion, and they're spiraling down. And they're missing school. I mean, the list is endless. So I think if we can throw services at them early as possible, even if it's only for two years, they're going to be better off than not having these services at all.
But it won't be for just two years. It'll be a continuum.
But that's a decision the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen will make in, I think it's actually, is it three years?
It is, but.
Three years.
Starting, sorry.
And that's Triton, Triton, I would have a say in whether or not that demand is there.
They may be able to find grants in the end. I think to make a decision on the fact that we can't support three years from now is not in the right interest of this town. I really feel that we need to support these services now. And three years from now, make a decision, they can look for grants in the meantime, that they may not have a need, or if they come to the town because there aren't those services, but say, this is how many people we've cared for, this is what we've done for, and this is the money we've saved the town by them not needing other services. I think would be critical. So I would say that if we approve it, we would also ask to have data presented to us.
I'm sure that they'll be able to provide that. And Carmella, your point is not misunderstood. That's what Bud was talking about, that's what the Board of Selectmen has talked about, that's what the Audiences of Citizens have talked about. This is, it is, it is an important concern. But I think that that concern is is not negated, but is overwhelmed by the need now. And this group makes hard decisions every year around a budget. And two years from now, three years from now, when these positions are reevaluated, if we need to make that hard decision, we will. And. And I could tell, I can't tell you with Triton Youth Services, but I can tell you with, when the town, when we talk about that one, anybody that comes on is gonna know that this is funded for two years. At the end of the two years, we, we are going to reevaluate. They're gonna know that coming in, that this is a two-year project.
And this is one of three requests for more staff?
For personnel, yeah, yeah. Anything else on Triton?
Where have you guys put capital request?
Capital request.
You can make an argument that every time we've bought something, it ends up costing more than what we start.
Yes, we have.
Have you given that? Should that get priorities to at least get into the supply chain?
There are only two capital requests right now that are, that are part of tonight's discussion. And that's the Historical Society, which we just heard about, and the ambulance. The rest of them, I don't believe are, I, I don't, and I say I, when I say I, I mean we. Don't believe that they.
Should you expand, what you did already? The, your thoughts on the ambulance. They asked for 250. You have, is negotiated the right word? That request down to 150?
I wouldn't call it negotiated. We just had a conversation. And, and I suggested to them because, for numerous reasons, that it might not be in everybody's best interest for us to fund, fully fund it. They agreed wholeheartedly. In fact, we have a letter that we received yesterday from the Ambulance Association committing to funding whatever we, whatever we commit to them. The Board of Selectmen just committed 137,500. They will fund the rest of the ambulance. They're committing to that. So as soon as we get this commitment from the town, the Ambulance Association will move forward and purchase a new ambulance with them funding the rest of the remains.
What are their other funding sources?
I can't speak to that. Yeah, they, they.
The Deep River Ambulance is a social, a separate association that's funded by billing through insurance companies and donations, 100%. There is no town.
I'm concerned in two words. One, we don't give them adequate a number that they cannot get ambulance. And the second is, there's enough need out there. If they have funding sources, they should use their own funds.
That's an interesting thought economy there. I, I, this was, this was a very frank conversation with them. They were not planning on moving forward with an ambulance because of the funds. This is, this funding is helping pushing them over into the, into the position of being able to buy, buy an ambulance.
So my question is, would this be a second ambulance, or they would be replacing the first?
They would be replacing the ambulance.
They have two now. This would be replacing the smaller of the two.
And what's the life expectancy of the one that they would be replacing? And can it not be refurbished?
This is a van ambulance. The bigger ambulance has been refurbished.
How often do they use the van ambulance?
They're, they're going out sometimes, most of the time today. It's a very busy, Deep River is a very busy ambulance association, believe it or not. The, the large ambulance has been refitted. The old box was put on a new chassis. The older one, the minivan, this looks like not a minivan, it's a van type. That's all one piece. That's not remove a body and put it on a new chassis type of ambulance. It's a, it's a buy a new one type.
But again, how long is the life expectancy of the van one that they have? Because that's probably their backup.
It's not really a backup. It's, it's more, it's to where and what type of service is required. The big ambulance is ALS, advanced life support. The little one is basically BLS, but it can be ALS also. The problem with the little ambulance is for ALS, there's too many people on board.
Correct.
You, I mean, you're, you're in that, you know, so, so it depends on the call. If it's a, if it's a bad call, the big ambulance goes, I'll use big.
Right.
And if, you know, but they're out sometimes, both of them are out multiple times a day without, without issue. And we are, in, in this town, we're very, been a, very, we're, we're, we have a very good, solid ambulance volunteer group. Deep River very rarely goes out to mutual aid. Deep River goes a lot to Essex and Chester. And Essex has three ambulances, and they sometimes can't get one to go. So, or the ambulance is very busy. I don't, you know, I didn't vote or anything like that, because I'm on, I'm on the board directors of the Deep River Ambulance. So I can give you some facts and things like that. It's, they're very busy, very busy. And the, the little one isn't a backup. It just depends on what, what the call is.
I'm looking for information to tell you the number of calls, and I don't have that. But they, they do, they are out multiple times a day. Like I, I get, every time they get called out. I don't know, I don't know the specifics if we need, Jen, I'm sure that Jen or someone can, can come here if, if you decide that not moving forward tonight was this, the Board of Selectmen will continue asking for it. But if you need more information, we can get that for you.
So without the funding, they will not be able to purchase the second?
Not now, no. They will continue to fundraise and to put monies aside for it.
So that will delay a year, two years? I mean, what would be the anticipated delay?
I don't have any answer.
They're, they're saying lead times on ambulances, and I'm just hearing, I'm certain it's anywhere from one, one year to two years.
So if one of those ambulances were to break down, we'd have to rely on mutual aid in order to support the town?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure if it's a matter of breaking down as much as, I think that, that it is, it is older. But it is as much as simple need to have a, the ability to serve more folks with the large, or more calls with the larger ambulance. I think, I think there are times, and I'm speaking anecdotally, that they, the, the big ambulance is out, another call comes in that needs a big ambulance, and then they go to mutual aid. Because they can't respond on their own, because that, that vehicle will not satisfy the need.
It's either, it could be the vehicle, but it also could be the amount of staffing available in the middle of the day when people have jobs, because we're 100% volunteer.
Yep.
2022 call summary. Total calls last year were 544. Calls in Deep River were 428.
Wow.
That's a lot of calls in the town of Deep River.
Is one ambulance better equipped than the other? Is the larger one?
They're both, they're both equipped equally, but advanced life support, whereas there's traumatic injuries or whatever, more emergency personnel are onboard the ambulance, thus the larger ambulance is preferred. If there is a, a bad accident, is the little ambulance not gonna go? It will go. But it will be, it'll be crowded for what is necessary.
You have ALS services, you do minimum of two, probably three people in the back of an ambulance, plus the patient. So it just gets tight. I'd be curious as to how many ALS calls there were in Deep River.
Yeah, we'd have to.
They might be able to supply that. I don't have that here.
I think, yeah, I could get it.
Yeah.
I mean, I would just wonder how often this is, you know, because we've got so much to.
The big ambulance went on 236 calls, and little, little ambulance went on 260 more.
But it would enhance the services provided to the residents by having, the bigger ambulance having two of them. So it's not just a new ambulance. It's actually enhancing the service.
That's my understanding, yeah.
So how many projects, and what is the dollar amount, and when do you wish to move to?
Well, we've gone way out of order here.
Stay focused.
There are, yeah, sorry about that.
Stay on your.
It does, yes, it does. And I, I would prefer to stay in order, and we'll talk about that when we get through, just so we can get through. I'd like to get through. The next item on the list, if we're done with the ambulance for now, is the Shoreline Soup Kitchen. It's a one-time payment of $10,000 for the purchase of a refrigerator truck. The Shoreline Soup Kitchen provides, as, as you've had an opportunity to read about all this stuff, the Shoreline Soup Kitchen has been an integral part of, of support for Deep River families in need throughout COVID, supplying food for, for pop-up, the food, I don't know, tents or whatever. We, we were bringing food from the Shoreline Soup Kitchen over here for pop-up events where folks could come and get fresh produce and things like that. The refrigerator truck, they, they supply the food for the soup kitchens throughout, throughout the area. Again, this is a, they, they will probably move forward without the $10,000, but the $10,000 is a contribution that has been requested from all of the towns that they serve in order to, to help purchase of the truck. I don't know if there are any thoughts or questions. If there are, now's a good time. Next up is Middlesex Health Center for Behavior of Health. They've asked for $15,525 to help supplement some of the, the efforts that they've been making towards supporting Deep River residents throughout this. I can read you the numbers if, that they provided, if you like, but you have the same information I have. The next that we went to was Deep River Social Services. We are requesting a full-time personnel of 30 hours to supplement the office now. We, we don't, we, right now, we provide eight hours of service, which is simply.
Thirty-two.
Pardon? Okay, six. No, but she does an hour outside, so. It doesn't matter. The office is, is only staffed for six hours a week. That is woefully inefficient, insufficient for today's needs. We would like to put a full-time personnel for 32 hours to, to keep that office open for 40 hours so that we can continue to provide the services. Yes, there, we have, the bigger concern for us on this issue was the same concern that you've expressed and that Carmella has expressed, and that we've been talking about since, since we thought about this. What do we do at the end of the two years? And the reality is, we will discuss it at the end of the two years. We might not need 40 hours. We will need more than six. I can guarantee that. It is not enough what we're providing now. So we think, we feel pretty strongly that this is something that should move forward.
Do you have any idea how many people are not being serviced?
I do not, no, I do not know who's not getting serviced. We get calls all the time during the, during the days, times that they're not, that she, that it's not staffed. And we, we push those forward as best we can. But we just don't have, she's not there, she's not available.
What kind of social services do they offer? What do they do?
Simple things like assisting someone to get into the state system for fuel assistance. Finding housing. Finding, getting people into state programs for mental health, for physical health, for, into nursing programs, helping people that can no longer help themselves, getting them into the proper counseling. What I'd like to do is bring in someone who has actually got some counseling experience, so that we can do some counseling here. But not, not have a counseling department, if you will. But someone, someone that, that can do more than just connect them with the right people. But that is, the, the bulk of the job is getting people connected. But it is also distribution of, of food. Distribution of the Christmas, making sure the families all have meals for Thanksgiving, that, for, over the holidays. That, that the children all have what they need through the holidays.
Are there other towns, or any other towns doing regionalization with social services, where the towns are sharing some of those responsibilities?
We are with Triton Youth Services. As far as so, as sharing social service departments, no. I know that some towns are doing something very similar to this, just, just to try to get over this hump and then evaluate where we need to be.
Do we have any idea how many families are not being serviced?
As I said before, I, I can't tell you, I can't prove the negative. I don't, I don't know. We are, we are doing some of the work here. And CHC is doing some of the work over there when, when the office is not open. But when folks call and they need oil, for example, Joyce will connect them with, give them the, the instructions on how to get in, in touch with the state, but also get them in touch with CHC so they can start the process of giving them what they, what they need to get through the weekend before, until they can get in touch with the, with the state. So I can't give you a num, I can't prove the negative of how many folks are not getting served. But I can tell you that there, that there are a lot of folks that are falling through the cracks.
And I'm sorry, right now, we only provide six hours?
Eight hours, but six hours in the office.
Board of Finance, what is your thoughts? You, now, the Board of Selectmen has voted to send these to a town meeting, or?
To send them to us.
We sent them to town meeting. So you would need a majority of vote of this board to go to a town meeting, where the town would vote.
Yep.
Board of Finance, what do you think?
There's a couple, there's a few more. Okay, we talked about the ambulance. We talked about the Historical Society. We talked about that. Board of Selectmen is, is requesting a $50,000 supplement to the energy assistance and the food pantry. We found that the, I think we talked about it a little bit last time, but the, you know, the need for fuel assistance is, is great, greater this year than, than I've ever experienced. Coupled with the fact that fuel is probably about twice as expensive as it was. The CHC has had to adjust their funding in order to accommodate the increase in costs. For example, it used, they used to, they would pay for aid delivery of 100 gallons. But they limited it to $300. It's, it's, you can't do that now. It's upwards of $600 to get that. So they've had to adjust. As a result, they are depleting their funds. That, those funds that they, that they get through fundraising every year. That is getting down to a point where this will get us back to where we need to be. What we'd like to do, I don't know that we can do it, we're asking for $50,000. But that was something that kind of we, we thought of today after I learned that the pantry is getting low as well. To add, we were going to just go with $35,000 to be used for energy assistance. But we'd like to say that we're, we're providing $35, $35,000 to go for energy assistance and another 15 to supplement food costs, to keep the, to ensure that the pantry is kept full.
So funds leave ARPA and go into the Deep River Community Fund account?
Yep, yep.
Is that the name of it, or is that Monopoly?
No, that is the name of it. I think Monopoly stole it from Deep River. And that brings us to the Housing Authority, which we discussed a little bit already. Those, I think that's, that's all that we voted on, right? Everything else, that's what we moved forward? Yeah, yeah. So those are, those are the requests from the Board of Fin, Board of Selectmen to the Board of Finance to move forward to a town.
Give me the math on those that you are recommending. What is the total dollar? 1,304?
We have, we have 1 million, 1 million dollars, roughly 1 million and change left.
Now, 1 million, you're going to hide from?
Yeah, yeah. I haven't added up what this is, but we can do that right now if you guys want to talk amongst yourselves for a second. I thought you did.
Yeah. Ballpark of about 253,000.
Right, so it'll leave us with 800 and change.
And so far, the only thing we've absolutely approved was the 300,000 for the radios?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Everything else is on the table.
And that, actually, we spent 250 of that today.
So we can't take it back?
And our Board of Finance, thoughts? Any projects you want more information on? You don't have enough?
I'd like more information on the ambulance. While they may need it, I'd still like some more information on how often the boat will need to go out and what they would do if they didn't get it, like how much money do they have in their coffers to afford?
That's fine. We'll ask the Ambulance Association either, would you prefer that someone come and answer your questions, or answer them in writing? They're happy to come.
Am I the only one that wants this information?
Well, that's.
My question, Board of Finance, do you need more? We certainly have, we have the applications. Board of Finance have been working on this for over a year, year or something?
Well, we've been accessing them, yeah.
I'm certainly deferring to your knowledge and base of your recommendation, but Board of Finance, what's your thoughts? Want more information? Comfortable?
No, it's one thirty-seven-five, right? Not two seventy-five.
Yes, it's one thirty-seven-five, yep, yep. And, and please ask the questions. I, I want this to be, I want you to be as informed as can be.
The ambulance?
So, if we're not, if you need information, ask for it. That said, we'd like to move some of these forward.
It's like four seventy, seventy-four, because I didn't add the ambulance.
Oh, okay. So it's four hundred and seventy thousand that we're asking. A little bit shy of half of the funds that we have left.
I'd like to get a little more on the social services.
Okay.
Probably understanding more about what the town is doing versus what other agencies are doing and where, where there might be some overlap. I think of United Way. I believe they have a info line called two-on-one, maybe?
Yes, that's, yep, that's what we push everyone to.
Right, so I'm just trying to think of where we can consolidate and there could be some duplication of service with other agencies. Maybe we're funding through these or other community-based funds that, that maybe we can help the town with, because I believe there is an opportunity to help. But we want to make sure the money's going to the right spot. And, you know, I love you thought of the counseling, but that would be a credentialed person, which I'm assuming is a little bit more in salary. So we got to think about those things. So I think that's the only one that I'd like to get a little more detail about, and it's really more knowledge than anything else.
Okay.
That would be helpful. The other ones, I'm very uncomfortable with at this point.
Is that consensus amongst the board on that one?
What's, where do you want to go, gang? Move? Wait?
What are we being asked to do? Get more information or vote on these items tonight?
Any and all of the above. I'm asking you guys to go through this, the list that we just went over. Discuss them as much as you want to, as much as you need to, determine whether you need more information, determine whether you want to move it forward, or determine whether you don't want to move it forward. And I'd like to, I'd like to get as many of these as you decide to in front of the town as quickly as we can.
So, would it make sense to take the ones that are least controversial and decide on those first?
I, I don't think there's any controversy about any of these, but if there are questions and thoughts, then, okay, well, controversy is a stronger word than I would use. There may be questions.
Tickets of opinion.
What two are those, Carmela?
What?
What two are those?
The ones that require extra staffing, that we're, that we then commit to for two years, and then at the end of two years, you have to say to those people, "Sorry, folks, you don't have a job anymore. You're out of your job," or you keep it on and it becomes a taxpayer burden. And the taxpayer's paying for the salaries and the benefits and the pensions and whatever else. And so your mill rate goes up.
I think I've been very vocal on that since day one.
So that's, those are my objections. I don't have any problem with the services that they provide. I do have with asking us to fund more people that we employ. And it becomes a taxpayer item then. This money doesn't come to us again in two years. It's here now.
Right. I'm going to say again, and I'm going to leave the conversation to you, but my response to that is the same now as it was then, and has been the same. Every, every time we've talked about this, we've had this conversation, and my response has been the same. We will address that when we need to. Right now, we need to address the, the needs. And, and I, I think these needs are important. I think these needs are necessary. And I understand and I, I agree with you, but I also feel very strongly that these needs are much greater than the concern of what are we going to do in two years.
And you said in our meeting, I guess, that, you know, upon hiring these people, they would be not put on notice, but say, "This is a two-year program," or "This is a two-year."
They will be aware.
And, and upon their employment, they know that possibly in two years or three years, wherever the position is, that the funding's gone and they might not have a job. So they're going to know upfront that this happens, and then at the time, if we feel that it needs to stay, that's another conversation for the Selectmen and Board of Finance, is do we continue to go with it? And if we decide as a group and say, "No," we say, "No," we do that all the time. You know, we do a lot of no's as well as yeses. But I think that the advance notice to those people that this is, this is money that is now, and it's not going to go in perpetuity. It's gonna, it's gonna end in two years or three years or whatever it is. If they know that going in, then, you know, not that it won't be difficult at the time, not that it won't be, but the need is now, is what I.
And, and remember, and then I'll, I'll be quiet. I'm not talking about this individual question anymore. I'm talking about these all. You are not the end decision.
Right.
You are moving it to the town, so the conversation will continue, and I imagine that this conversation will come up in front of the town as well. You know, I'm, I'm asking you guys to talk about these, to make your decisions, and I'm not going to interrupt anymore unless you ask me a question.
For Tri-Town, for the Tri-Town Youth Services, seventy-three percent of the money is already committed, right, by those towns, if?
If.
If we provide the twenty-seven percent.
If we provide, yep.
Right, so they already affirmatively voted in favor of that.
Thoughts? I'm with, I'm with everybody. The deeds are there. We're moving too many places, moving too many pieces across the test board right now. But I do, I do feel a little uncomfortable that the expectations will be there. And I don't think, I, I'm going on record, I mean, town of Deep River, small town like us cannot afford this kind of social services. Don't. I don't know. Carmella, do you offer us any wisdom? Would you like to?
No, but maybe just as an important point of information.
This one stays, this one doesn't. I don't know, it worked in the Bible.
Maybe it would help if Tri-Town came in to tell us what they're serving. I don't know what they do, short of hearing what you're telling us that they do. Maybe they should come and tell us what they do.
Here you go.
Thank you.
You've already been provided that, by the way.
Yeah, I did, I did print it out, and I don't know what they, what happened.
I might add, a lot of this stuff is because of the pandemic. I do believe they could have done us a favor by not making it a five-page application. A little bit shorter application would have been helpful.
Yeah.
Yes, because I got lost. And it is the agency that we have been using and are required to use to provide social services. So I will defer.
And we're, we're coming off a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic or whatever. You know, this is, we never, none of us planned on any of this stuff. We never thought we'd get one point three million dollars or whatever from the, from the, you know, but it's, it's how we as small towns react. I, that's the way I look at it. It's how do we take best care of what we have, you know? In two years, we might not need these people or whatever, but we've just come off of this and all the facts. Kids and adults and seniors and all that, they've all been suffering. Businesses have been, all this stuff's been suffering, and you can't plan for that. Hopefully, we never have another one, and hopefully, we never have to make this decision again.
I will suggest that Tri-Town has been at the forefront, along with our schools, with our kids and our families for the last three years, more so than, than ever.
And the schools have got their own, their own art funds, too. So they're working.
They're doing the same thing. They're bringing.
They're working on their end also.
They've brought people in.
Yeah.
Using this, the same funds to help alleviate this situation.
Board of Finance, is there resistance in your silence? I mean, the deeds are there. I, I'm jumping on boards. Let's get started.
Shall we make a motion? Should we say yes, or should we go? So I would move that we approve money for Tri-Town Youth Services. In the amount of?
Or bring it.
Forty-eight thousand one hundred to bring it, that, that, yes. Thank you.
Better consideration.
Any other thoughts supporting that?
Somebody has to second our motion in order for it to be discussed.
Do you want to make a motion, or?
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
All right, first, second? Oh, we got to vote on that, don't we? I always get confused at this point in the game. All those in favor, please say aye, and then we can have a discussion if you like. All in favor, say aye. Anyone wish to discuss, now that it's on the floor. Does anybody wish to discuss it in more detail? Yay?
You already aye'd.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Cool?
That's one.
All right?
Six more to go.
Yeah, exactly, one down.
How are you going to present these at a town meeting? Are you going to have people who have submitted a request present, or will you have them make a presentation?
We're going to invite them. And we'll do each, we'll, we'll do them individually. I can't ask the town to vote on these all at once. We'll go through them individually with each person. Each agency or person or association will have the opportunity to present. I certainly.
To present or to respond to questions?
Both. I, I don't think, I don't think it's appropriate for me.
All requests we have, we could be there all night, just in a presentation.
That's another reason why we're doing this in, in broken halves. I don't believe there's going to be a whole heck of a lot of discussion. I hope there's not as much discussion over these as there are going to be in the remaining requests. I think there will be conversation, but I think that it won't be as, as bad a meeting as I anticipate for some of the later ones. And I didn't mean bad in any way other than.
No, yeah.
There'll be a lot of conversation.
These projects do seem to be consistent with the purpose of the act, to bring relief to those who were negatively affected by COVID. We seem to be doing what we're expected to do.
We always try to do just that. So what do you guys say, I'm going to keep, I'm going to help move along. I want to, I want to go home for bail and stay. So what do you say to Shoreline Soup Kitchen? That's next on the list.
Yes.
So make a motion?
I move that we donate or give, appropriate ten thousand dollars, one-time payment to the Shoreline Soup Kitchen to purchase a refrigerator truck.
I second that.
Then you, that motion was to move it to the town, right? Not to do it.
First, second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Middlesex Health Center.
I'll make a motion that we move the Middlesex Health Center request for fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty-five to the town.
First, I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose?
I'm abstaining because I vote for.
Good job.
I think I need to do that.
You did it so quietly.
I've had to do a few of the extensions myself.
Deep River Social Services, it is my understanding that at least one of you wants more information. Do the rest of you agree with that, or do you want to move it forward?
I agree with that.
What do you want to do?
Get more information.
Well, we're meeting in two weeks again, so we should have that by then, so.
Thank you.
That's fine, if that's what you want. What I'm going to do, what I'm going to ask, though, well, let's go through this. Let's keep the conversation going. Next is Deep River Historical Society.
I would approve fifteen.
Perfect. Fifty-two?
Fifty-three thousand dollars.
Extra root?
To move, go to the town to, for maintenance.
I got a first. Anybody with a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right?
Ambulance Association.
I'll move the Ambulance Association goes to the town for, what, one thirty-seven, five hundred?
Second?
Second. I was second. I thought you were.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? I would still like, I mean, I support you. But I would still like some more information. I'd like to put this one on for two weeks, just to get a little more.
I will ask them to come to the meeting.
It'll be good for the town.
Yeah.
But they're, they will be in front of the town, so.
Right.
All right, excellent.
Did you vote, or just have a conversation?
Well, we have. So are we looking for more information, or should we proceed with the vote?
Well, I guess we can proceed with the vote, but I think that I would still like that information to put together the town.
All right, you got a first and a second. We're going to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're still a nay?
No, I said aye. I know, I said aye. I just walked forward.
Nay is not a flattering term.
Board of Selectmen, fifty thousand dollars total contribution to the, to supplement the energy assistance and the food pantry managed by this Community Health Committee.
Anyone find that appealing?
I would second approve this.
I'll second.
Okay. I got a first and a second. Yeah. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone oppose? Thank you.
And last is the request from the Deep River Housing, Housing Authority to, to start a pilot program for providing housekeeping needs with part-time personnel, request for fifty thousand dollars.
So?
All those in favor? Anyone? First, second?
I'm a second.
Who's second?
Housing Authority.
I made the motion. You can second it.
All those in favor, funding the Housing Authority request. Say aye. Anyone oppose?
So, I would just like to, are we done with these? Is, have we thought about, this is out of left field, but a lot of these positions, I have seen them get funded through grants, and when I listen to, I think his name is Bruce, talk about that they have a grant writer, it's a part-time, like a, I mean, she does this in her spare time. Would it not be thoughtful to, like, maybe put a little bit of money from here into paying somebody to do grant writing to fund these programs ongoing? Because there is money out there, and I just think that we're, we've just spent some money that might have been, we could have gotten from grants, and we had somebody to take the time to write them.
I, I, that's a good question and a good, good comment. I will tell you that the Tri-Town Youth Services is more than fifty percent funded through grants already.
Right.
So they are working, and this is considered a grant. Remember, this is a grant from the federal government to the towns to utilize and to distribute as grants towards these things. So this is, in fact, what this, is part of what this is. But yes, the Historical Society, I noticed the same article. But they are, I'm going to defend them a little bit, and they are in a reorganization stage right now. And I commend them for the efforts that they're putting in. And, and, yeah, and I, and I do think that, that us giving them this little push will be a big help towards the rest of the projects. They've got a tremendous amount of projects that they're working on. But yes, the grant writing is crucial. The Library Board, I would love the Library Board to get, to start doing some work and, and looking at grants themselves, because.
Housing Authority, if you're going to wait, hold your breath for DSS. I'm holding it for.
No, that's exactly, that's exactly why we're moving this now. It's not going to get fixed.
It's not going to, it's still not going to be fixed. I can promise you that.
But we'll have, but we'll have a pilot program that hopefully we can get them to adopt and fund.
I think, again, is if we had somebody to write a grant supporting this pilot program and get it up to the state, we might have a better chance of getting it funded. So just, I mean.
No, but I, I, I agree with you. Joanne does a good job of getting grants already. So this is just something, this literally came, came to, into our conversation last Thursday that started this whole thing, when she, she came with it in the middle of a, you know, panic attack, really, how are we going to do this? And I suggested that we come to you, to you, to you, and to the town, and see if we can try to, try to help support that a little bit more for, for a number of our residents. But the grants are out there more than ever right now. So don't think that we're not, we're continuing to ask for grants and look for grants. This is just immediate. The money is here, the money, the grants.
I think it's my concern, it's just that you've got very, very busy people already doing three jobs that we're not asking to write grants for, and you just don't have the time to go looking for them and writing them.
When we go over our budget, when we start our workshops, you'll see that we have a grant writer on, funded. So when we need to, we can find them.
And to address that, I cut this out of a newspaper, the Journal Inquirer, it's about the fire department in town applying for grants.
Ours just, we just, we're doing another grant.
We could pass this on.
We just, this will be our third straight year applying for a grant for a fire truck. We've been turned down twice so far. So we will, we are continuing, but, good, thank you.
And this was another one about getting a charter.
Oh, you can talk to, you can start a committee if you want to. Talk to Chester. They're working on it right now. They, they just had a governance, they put together a governance committee, and I have not yet read the results of their study.
Remind me of the dollar amount we're holding back or not allocated?
We're holding back about five hundred and thirty thousand, right, four-seventy?
Just over five hundred, it hasn't been, yeah.
About five hundred and thirty.
Which means what? It's a large number. Which means there will be more to follow, or are we holding some just in case?
There's plenty more to talk about. I, I, and I very much appreciate you guys coming in. in on a quasi-holiday, but also, also understanding and agreeing that these are, these are, these, what we talked about tonight are, are items that, that should be moved as quickly as we can at this point.
So what's the plan to move to the town in coming time?
We're going to ask you guys, you've just voted to move them to town meeting, we're going to, we're going to schedule a town meeting for as quickly as we can. I'm going to guess it's going to be about three weeks.
If we have committed to a project, town meeting commits, and for some reason, I won't even attempt to make them up, the project cannot go forward. How do you, I'm assuming in some way it comes back, but does it have to go back to the town? Is that up to us to decide project doesn't go forward? Us being?
No, once we, once we commit, once the town commits, the money is committed until the project, I'm going to make something up. Let's say the radios project, which we've already committed that $300,000, let's say that completely falls apart, something else comes up that says, so you don't need radios, man, we can, we can put a chip in you and, and you're all set, and we only need $50,000 to do that. That project, then all that money comes back into the coffers.
Just come back.
And we go back to, back to the drawing board and use it for other projects.
Same question on the opposite side. If a project is not adequately funded, then they come back to us and ask for more?
If there's money.
No, this is not, they can, they certainly can. There's nothing stopping them from getting it.
First, I just, three, hell, Joanne, $50 was adequate for two years to do these things, so.
I'm going to tell you.
Assume it's a guess.
That I believe, and I actually hope, that by the end of this calendar year, this money's all spent.
It's spent?
Yeah. And, and money won't, you know, the ongoing projects, the money won't be spent, but the money is committed.
Are you using spent and committed differently, or?
Yes, I am. Spent means like, gone. Like, the $10,000 will be spent, the $48,000 will only be partially spent because it's an ongoing project.
Board of Questions?
When you present this stuff to the town, do they see the whole list, whole kit and caboodle, or do they only see those that we moved tonight?
It's a good question. I think that we certainly should present that, that this is a whole list, but we're.
Only voting on?
We're only voting, we're here to vote on this.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I actually did not read Aaron's article. If he might have put this in, I don't know. I don't know. But yes, we'll, we'll give the, I want the town to know as much as they can about all of the things that are being requested.
And are they?
But I don't, I don't want to confuse the issue by, we're not talking about the, the Deep River Public Works request tonight. We're talking about these.
Right, but in their minds, they know that at some point that could come up to be voted on.
Yeah.
So they're not just, you're not isolating these and saying, this is all we have to be concerned about. These are the ones that are requested, so these are the ones we are ultimately going to consider and maybe bring all to you.
We're only bringing seven today tonight.
We'll figure that out, because we have not made decisions on some of these. Some of these are going to get thrown right out. Some of them are only going to be partially funded. We are not, we are not in a position yet to, to say that this is moving forward or this isn't. So I'm, I'm not sure yet. We've got a few weeks to figure it out. Give me a call, and let's have, let's set up a time we can talk about, anybody wants to talk about this stuff, how we're going to do this town meeting. The only thing I can tell you for sure is we're going to talk about each one of these items individually. Again, people, ample opportunity to ask questions and to answer questions, and, and then we're going to ask people to vote.
If there's some that are going to be pulled out, should they not be pulled out before you pass it out?
Yeah. And that's why, that's why I'm, I'm answering a question that I hadn't thought about. But yes, that's part of the question. Part of my question is, I don't want to put it in front of the town if it's not even going to be in front of the town.
Right.
Yeah.
Another thing, not to throw a wrench in the system here, but we forgot to talk about the $75,000 for Park and Rec that we've already passed.
It's already moved to town meeting, yeah.
Moved to town meeting.
Yeah.
So that has to be added onto this list also?
It should be, it should be, but I'm, I'm actually talking with Park and Rec about how.
Okay, no, just that we have passed it.
That's a continuing conversation, but that is, if, if Parks and Rec decides they want to stick with what they've got right now, that will go to town meeting.
Because?
That's one of them that will be on the side of what we did tonight.
Yep.
That was on there, all right.
Yep.
But it was already, yeah.
So I'm curious about that one, because I actually, when I heard about it a couple weeks ago, I was not, I, it was like, free to me. So I went back to the minutes, well, it was in February, it was discussed, I wasn't at that meeting.
Right.
But in February, you approved it when you go back to the minutes for four years, not three, according to the minutes.
Music festivals, I would.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to why you would approve something for, whether it's three or four years.
Because at the time, that was a four-year, that was just bad language. It was, it's a four-year, the, the funds are, it was a four-year timeframe from when they, they actually invented ARPA and they, and when all the money needs to be committed, which is the end of 2024. So there was four years there. So when they came to us asking for the money, they wanted to do a festival for four years. Time is not, it just hasn't worked out. Like, they did a festival last year on their own with, with funds that they had, and it was, it was good, but it was horrible weather, so it didn't work out. This will be, this will be for, I, I think either three or two years. It's up to the Park and Rec, but we're working on how they're going to do it. They had intended on, on a concert on a, at Plattwood, or not, at, at Dabitt Field, but we're working on making sure that it's more central into the town, on the green, in the different restaurants and bars that, and facilities that want to house something, even something might, might be upstairs. So we, hopefully, we're going to have music throughout the community during this festival weekend or festival.
How does that meet the ARPA funds? I don't know.
Pardon?
Well, maybe it's not a conversation for another, maybe I can just collect, but I don't understand how that fits in with ARPA funds.
Well, as.
Just around brings up your.
It can be, it can be, it can be considered economic, economic revitalization. It bring, it's going to bring people into town to utilize, to, to discover the town, to use the restaurants, to use the shops, to all of those kind of things. But it's important, we didn't discuss this with you guys yet today, but it's important to recognize that the ARPA funds, the guidelines, provide us with suggestions of what these monies can be used for. They, they establish guidelines, and I think there are other folks that probably can recite those guidelines better than I can. But, you know, economic recovery or social services type of things for, as a direct result for COVID prevention and COVID recovery. The caveat to that is that communities that receive, the final ruling states that any town community that received less than $10 million can spend the money on anything that they want to. Capital, we could pave roads with it if we want to. Many communities have. Many communities went right out and bought three fire trucks. So there is no real criteria of you must use the money for this or this. We are trying very hard to, to work within the parameters of those guidelines, but there are something, there's, there are some capital expenditures that we will be talking about that, that may not, in fact. I do believe that the music festival, which I'm hopeful that we can actually change it over to like an arts festival, is something, or maybe a smaller idea, like the New Haven Arts and Ideas Festival, is something that will in fact provide for economic recovery for many of our shops on town and, and, and help move the town into a, a more sustainable community.
All right, Board. Thank you. This was the Board of Finance does, decisions on finance stuff.
I make a motion.
Need a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a motion to resign? Resign. Motion to. So move. John, I forgot to mention.
Second.
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 Our next meeting is our normal monthly meeting.